Okay. Let me call to order the April 6, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting for Borough Council. Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag? Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let me announce we're going to have a change of order and we're going to jump to number 11 and then we'll recess for another period to have another conditional hearing. So it is at this time, we're going to have a presentation from the Pottstown Fire Department. Chief Frank Hand, if you will.
So, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a lot of members of the Pottstown Fire Department from all four companies, the Empire, the Goodwill, the Phillies, and the North End. We're recognizing two of the companies tonight for 150 years of service to the borough. If you read the dates on them, we were supposed to do it last January, but we didn't get a chance. And as you can see, I really want the council to recognize that there's over 25 volunteers here tonight and paid drivers in the borough. And these guys, they work hard and girls. You know, we've had a busy couple of days. And, you know, I think this is a great tribute to the, that the boroughs recognizing our members. So, Justin?
Yeah. Who do you have first? Phillies.
Joe and Brent. Joe Brock, Fire Chief of the Goodwill Fire Company, Brent, President of the Phillies.
All right. It was funny, when I moved into my house, somebody had left a bunch of old commemorative glasses. And one of the glasses was from the Philadelphia Steam Fire Company. And when Frank came onboard, it was for their 100th anniversary. And when Frank came onboard, I gave it to him. So it's pretty cool that we're here today and we're celebrating the 150th anniversary. Let me just read to everyone what is on the plaque. The Philadelphia Steam Fire Engine Company, the Phillies, established January 3, 1871. On the 6th day of January 2021, the Borough of Pottstown joins all area citizens in celebrating the 150th anniversary of our Philadelphia Steam Fire Company Number One. The selfless heroism of Pottstown's bravest is a shining example of the best enduring qualities of Americans. As the kneeling fireman reminds us of the sacrifices of those who risked their lives every day to protect us, let us reflect on this anniversary and in the years ahead, honor gratitude for Goodwill's courageous efforts to protect all Pottstonians and the citizens in the surrounding area. We're glad to have you and congratulations.
So Sybil and Andy Inhop, and Dwayne, you might as well come up because Kevin had a lead. Sybil was, as many know, last year Jim Smale was the president of the Goodwill Fire Company. And he passed and Sybil was the number two person in the Goodwill. And Andy Inhop is the new president and Dwayne's the past president.
All right. Good. Well, I didn't find a Goodwill glass, but maybe we'll have to create one for this anniversary. All right. The Goodwill Steam Fire Engine Company established January 6, 1871. On the 6th day of January 2021, the Borough of Pottstown joins all area citizens in celebrating the 150th anniversary of our Goodwill Steam Fire Company Number One. The selfless, excuse me, the selfless heroism of Pottstown's bravest is a shining example of the best enduring qualities of Americans. As the kneeling fireman reminds us of all the sacrifices of those who would risk their lives every day to protect us. Let us reflect on this anniversary and in the years ahead, honor gratitude for Goodwill's courageous efforts to protect all Pottstonians and citizens of the surrounding area. Thank you very much. We really appreciate your service.
So I'm assuming our mayor, if anyone wants to say anything to the fire crews, I appreciate it, you know?
Well, I just want to say thank you so much for all of your service. When I moved here, today is also a very special day for me. And you, sir, on the end, can go pick out, if you are of age, you may go pick out a bottle back there. Thank you for carrying them. 10 years ago today, I moved to the borough and became a Pottstown resident. And I just want to say thank you all for making this the first time I've ever felt a sense of community. I have gone shopping with you, with the kids during Christmas. I have gone to fundraisers for kids with all of you. And I just want to say thank you all for your service. And the way that you work with all the other departments in the borough is very amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you.
And go back to our regularly scheduled meeting. But before I start with the subcommittees, on behalf of council and staff, I would like to offer congratulations to Matt and Jennifer Ovi. They are the parents of a new daughter, Nora.
Yes.
Enjoy.
Congratulations.
Okay, under subcommittees. Councilor Lapidenski, anything for infrastructure?
The codes, our, the infrastructure report's in your packet.
Okay. More to add there? How about transportation?
The report's in your packet as well.
Good. Efficient Methods Committee, Councilor Lapidenski.
Nothing major new, just, we're just reviewing some data to see what we can present and improve upon next month.
Okay. And you might want to let them know you're, we're working with the codes department. Our Public Works right now. All right. Ordnance Review, Councilor Proskoff.
No meeting.
Nothing. And Economic Development and Business Liaison. So you have two successes coming in tonight.
Good news. Let's keep them coming. Okay. So tonight, I want to talk about a lighting project that has been going on for a very long time. I think Madam Mayor even contributed to the project for the downtown. So the idea always has been to create a canopy of the Edison bulbs. If you think about what's down in the park in Smith Family Plaza, that was first strung for the event of FET and then we decided to leave it. And I think it has been generally accepted as a good thing. So we actually took over from a business party that was trying to raise the funds, PAID took over that fundraising effort and also to coordinate the efforts of hanging those lights. So Justin and I have been working with your solicitor and PAID Solicitor to have an agreement because, of course, we want to make sure that they're hung in a responsible way, but also not holding PAID or the borough responsible should anything fall. We are doing this really to coordinate the efforts and to be able to put the lights up. We wanted to be able to purchase the lights so there would be uniformity to the lights that are being used. And we also are coordinating the effort of the installation of those lights by requirements of how high they have to be and making sure that they are going to be installed safely. We took on this effort because we knew after COVID that the small businesses in downtown, although they probably would like to participate, might not have the financial wherewithal to be able to do it at this time. They will be responsible for running the electric though. So their owners, or if they own the building, will, it will be running to their buildings. The electric will be running there and they will be responsible for replacement of the bulbs. So we're, we're going for the first hanging of them, but after that, they will become the responsibility of the business owners along the street. So, Justin, I think you're going to just work through the logistics and sort of the, what we're going to do. But overall, it will be PAID that's leading the effort and we will be asking for the sign off on the hold harmless.
What areas, from where to where?
Yeah, so we're going to start on, probably on the north side of High Street. We mapped it out. We purchased enough lights by the money that we have. We're hoping to get more donations by people seeing lights and understanding that we can only start with a small portion of it. So we are planning to go from about Kohl's Tobacco down. So we also have to look for places where they can be safely strung, either through the trees or wrapped to the poles so that they can meet the height requirements as well as not a long strand where they're going to dip and become a hazard. So it's part of the placemaking and beautification of downtown. Would you like me to stay for landbanks since I'm up here? Let's just keep moving. Okay. So I don't really have any new news. Landbank did meet at its monthly meeting. We are moving along with the fair grant. Obviously, 707 Hamilton is a project that the borough is also involved in. They did receive some funding to be able to do some mitigation efforts before the property is transferred. So we are working through those items. I can tell you that I was at the statewide conference for Pennsylvania Economic Development Association yesterday in Harrisburg. And it was interesting to me from mayors to county officials talking about just getting their landbanks up and running. So you can all be proud that you were on the forward edge of it because they are certainly something that a lot of municipalities and townships and counties are seeing the value in.
Very good.
That is my report.
Thank you very much. I guess there's nothing more from Chief Hand. Okay. And Human Relations, Ms. Levingood?
She's not here. I'm going to step in for her.
Oh, please, Lisa.
So in April, Christians and Islam celebrate their holy holidays. Christians celebrate Easter, the resurrection of Jesus Christ. Ramadan, Islam's holiest month, began on April 2 and ends on May 2. During that time, Muslims follow many rituals and traditions. The next Human Relations Commission meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 12, at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and all are welcome to attend.
Thank you. Library, Ms. Lipsky? Out there? No? All right. Maybe Monday. How about the Ricketts Center, Councilor Kirkland?
Points I'd like to highlight. First of all, in March, we had 38 new members. Great. So now we're over 521 members. Awesome. After school program, some things are continuing. The after school program, 2:30 PM to 5:30 PM. The adult programming, which allows adults to use the facilities during the daytime, is ongoing. There's going to be adult basketball league that actually started at the end of last month. The league will consist of three games a week. And soccer for success is going on still. I was still at the karate program from the Philadelphia School of Korean Karate. That's from, that's Monday and Wednesdays from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The fitness center, the fitness center is great there. It's always available. We, you know, we spend money going to LA Fitness and different places, but we have a really good fitness center right there in the community. I, you know, I believe it's on like $15 for like six months, something like that. It's very reasonable. And it's state of the art equipment, you know, that you can use and everything. It's a great facility. Really should be utilized more. Their bread of life shower and laundry program, every Tuesday and Thursday nights at 6:00 to 8:30 PM. That allows people to, to, you know, to get showers and things like that. You know, people who's, who's down and out, you know, to have some, you know, facility to do things like that. The Red Roll Diamond Dance Team is on Mondays and Wednesdays from 5:30 to 7:00. Youth Basketball, Youth Basketball, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Programs that we're looking to institute in the future are more adult programs during the day. Yoga, possibly, down, down the line. Expanding the after school program. There was actually a new staff member hired, Tadawat's the lead program coordinator, and they started their first week of April. Some building updates. There's going to be some improvement on the basketball court fencing, the surface to the blacktop, some bleachers and new lighting. That's the report.
Staying busy.
Yes.
Good. Okay. Pottstown School District, Councilor Lindsay.
Okay, I'm going to keep mine short and sweet because I know the mayor has like two pages of stuff that she did. Okay, don't. I just want to say one important thing, and that's the school is hiring. So go on Pottstown, the school district's website. They need teachers. They need people in the school. If you know anybody, please have them contact them because we, we need teachers and we need staff in there. So if you can, or if you know anyone, spread the word. Share it on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, whatever you do. Just make sure you send it out there because I'm sure all schools are having some challenges. If, but we, we need teachers. So if you can, go on the school website. They're, they have a whole list of jobs. Okay? That's all I got.
Good. Mayor Hendrick, your report.
So given the hour and the length of our agenda, I would like to present my report on Monday, considering I left it on my desk in my office. And I will do even one better. I will give a copy to Ginny so she can include it in the packet for tonight. But instead of my report, if you would like to pass around some glasses, and I brought some for the audience as well. I have non-alcoholic beverages and, for those of you up here and some select few out there, I have the real thing back here, which you can take home after the meeting. And I'm going to make Dawn do this so I don't embarrass myself. So if you could open this for me.
Dawn embarrassed himself.
Today is my 10-year anniversary of being a Pottstown resident. On April 6, 2012, I made an investment and bought a house and moved to Wilson Street. And the rest is history. I just want to say thank you so much for welcoming me into your family. This has been, I can honestly say, with the exception of loss and family, this has been the best 10 years of my life. And there's really no place I'd rather be. So I'm going to let Dawn open that and. So if you could come up and grab a glass and I will pour it for you. We can raise a glass of non-alcoholic beverage.
Yeah.
I just, it'd be nice to celebrate with all of my favorite people. And, you know, we don't want to start any rumors.
Right. Just because you said it, don't mean they ain't going to spread it. Only, I just love our mayor. Look, you want me to pass?
I expect everyone in the audience to be holding a glass of non-alcoholic, whether you're going to drink it or not. I'd like everybody to raise a glass, please.
This is what you miss out on when you don't come in person.
That's right.
I have mine now.
Sorry, Lisa.
And Stephanie, we're one year and one month apart of when I moved here.
That's crazy.
Isn't that crazy?
Mine is. I have two glasses, one for Dawn and one for you. You don't put one in.
Anyone else like a glass? All right. So if every could, one could raise a glass, I just wanted to say thank you.
You could just put some in there.
Cheers and to community.
Cheers.
Cheers. Cheers.
You want the real thing?
Yeah.
And that concludes my brief report.
Okay. We're all going to leases after this?
No, I have, I have it all there for you. You don't have to go anywhere.
Oh, okay.
Bottle on your way home.
Well, you got to bring some to me.
I have a bottle for you, yes.
All right. For my report, there's a barrel in the back and somebody.
I was going to say, really? I like you, Justin.
And we're going to tap it?
Yeah.
No, 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 we don't want to do the mayor.
No, but if you did that, we'd have better attendance. Okay, Mr. Manager, what's going on?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So just one piece of information that I did want to pass on to you that staff is currently working on a federal raise grant to fund the extension of Keystone Boulevard to Old Redding Pike and connect it with the Santa Toga Interchange. We're working on this grant in partnership with West Potts Grove Township, assistance from, from PAID Traffic Planning and Design and Montgomery County Planning Commission. The total project cost, it was just updated and expected to be around $14 million for everything. Design, the roadway, you know, the engineering, moving the trail, all of it. $14 million. However, since the borough and West Potts Grove are considered rural, under these funding guidelines, waiver can be requested for the local match for, for this grant. So otherwise, the, the, half the match would equate to 1.645 million, which would also be West Potts Grove share as, as well because we would split the total match of roughly 3.3 million in, in half. Our match, we would plan to fund through developer contributions. We have one hopefully coming in soon and also other grant funding sources. So at this point, the only outlay to the borough is half of the cost for the consultants to prepare the grant application, which is also being split with West Potts Grove Township. So unless there are any concerns, staff will plan to submit this grant on, in mid-April.
So you say a match is not required or is required?
We are eligible, I guess, because of our classification, to have the match waived. We don't know, so we've asked them to waive the match, but we, we don't know if they'll waive the match until we actually submit the application and they review it.
Okay.
But we would, we have some money that'll be coming to us from one of the developments down there and then we're going to be looking for companion grants. I mean, the idea is that there isn't an outlay for West Potts Grove or, or the borough. So Scott Hutt and I, the manager over there in West, will be looking for other opportunities as well. It's not expected due to the federal process and just how long everything takes that it would be built until 2029. So we would have until that time to come up with the full match amount. A couple other items on here, a couple merging issues. So material costs are increasing across the board. And this goes for everything from fuel to grass seed. We obviously maintain our parks every year in the spring. We make a big effort and the grass seed has went up 75%. There's just things that we're keeping an eye on because of the fertilizer that is, that is used in, within the grass seed. That's what causes the increased cost for that. Obviously, cybersecurity issues. You know, we're aware of some of the federal bulletins that have been put out and we have put and are putting measures in place to protect against any kind of cyber attack. We had a good meeting with the county to get training on their emergency alert system through ReadyMonco and Everbridge. So we're hoping that if the county does select that vendor, which they're supposed to find out in the next couple, couple of months, we'll move over to that platform, which will then allow us to send text messages out for various emergencies.
I'm just, I'm just curious on that point.
Yeah.
You said that vendor, you said vendors raise prices for everything, pretty much? Because of the situation in the world, right?
I, I didn't say that, but, but yeah, I mean, I think given everything that's going on in, in the world, all the prices are going up, especially anything associated with fuel. So fertilizer is a, you know, derivative of the gas industry, from what I understand.
I was just thinking because whenever like someone called and say, hey, you know, it's going to cost more, you know, whatever, do we kind of like, you know, push back a little bit? Because some, there's some people taking advantage of the situation.
Right. Right.
Some people who have inventory, that they didn't spend more on the inventory that they had before the situation, that they're charging more on that. You, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
On, on that inventory that didn't cost them anymore because they didn't purchase anything new.
Right.
You know, so, you know, are we saying, well, is this previous inventory? Or am I buying previous inventory or am I buying new inventory? You know, so, I mean, that's just something that just came to my mind. You know, are we asking that question? Will we buy these goods? Is that?
Yeah. I mean, we always do our due diligence and try to find the best price for, for the taxpayer. And being a borough, we have requirements that actually, you know, require us to get three quotes.
Okay.
Go out to bid. So, yeah, I mean, and especially for those higher dollar purchases, we are following those guidelines to make sure that we're getting the best price available from, and getting prices from multiple contractors or vendors.
Okay. Kind of knows a lot of gouging going on there. A lot of gouging.
Yeah. No, definitely something to keep an eye on.
Everyone's trying to price gallons, just like big oil.
Right. And then also, just another announcement, it's National Safe Digging Month. So please call before you dig and dial 811. Couple of project updates. So we awarded the Sunstrom Field and 42 Walnut Street stormwater arch repair. We had pre-construction meetings for both of those projects. The Sunstrom Field will likely be able to get underway a little bit sooner. However, 42 Walnut is looking like sometime midsummer, late summer to get, get that started due to the material delays that we are getting from, from the vendor there. And we are going to hold a ribbon cutting for the opening of the King Street Bridge on the afternoon of April 14. We still are nailing down the time, exact time. And then the bridge should be open to traffic the following day if everything goes well. So we would hope that any of you who would like to attend, as well as the public, please, please come out and celebrate the reopening of the roadway after two years.
I mean, what time?
We don't have a time. We're going to update that. So just stay tuned. We'll send emails and post on social media once we, once we have a firm time. PennDOT paving, they were scheduled to pave High Street between Kime all the way to the Borough Line. They are telling us now that that was pushed back to 2023. So we've got to wait another year for that. Reason being is some work that's being done in lower Potts Grove Township for the installation of utilities, which has not happened yet. So they want to wait until those utilities are installed before they do the paving. Good news is that Pico is still on track for paving at the end of the month. We don't have a firm date yet, but we'll, that's another one. Stay tuned. As soon as we have that, we'll push that out to everyone on social media and on our website. That paving will happen between Charlotte and Kime Street. And they would start at Charlotte Street and work their way down. It does look like, as long as the weather holds out, at this point, they should be out of that area in time for, for the car show. So that's kind of what we're, we're aiming for there. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate, congratulate Dave Haygood for being selected as the Assistant Director of Public Works. David came from Sunoco, where he was a pipeline supervisor and worked the past four years for the borough as a service worker and more recently as the Public Works Engineering Inspector. I know that he's soaking up all that he can. I know that he's, uh, soaking up all that he can from Mr. Yerga right now. Uh, he'll have his work cut out for him, but I have no doubt that, uh, that he'll be up to the task.
Good. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, there's a zoning relief request from Ann Anderson.
Yes, there's a, there's a hearing before the zoning hearing board on April thirteenth at seven PM on the application of Ann Anderson. Uh, she's seeking a variance. Uh, she's proposing to operate a holistic day spa at the property located at three forty-three East High Street. That proposed use is not permitted within the downtown district. I believe this is the, the corner property in the former site of the Evans, Houseman, and Richard Insurance Business. I believe this will be listed for potential action Monday night. And as you know, you're not required to take a position, but you certainly could take a position to support or oppose the application.
Okay. So that'll be listed for Monday. Thirteen, the Hill School Turf Field Minor Land Development Plan. Uh, any, anyone here, or, oh, hi.
Evening.
Evening.
My name is John Medendorf, and I'm with Penoni Associates, the civil engineer, uh, hired by the Hill School as their consultant for the project for the land development process. Um, I've been working with the Hill School for about five years now. This is, I think, our fourth project that I'm here tonight to present to you. Uh, we previously met with the Planning Commission about two weeks ago to present the project, run over the project in the comments, um, received, can, received the conditional approval, um, with just one topic to talk about, specifically tonight in regard to the trees. So I'll circle back to that, um, but first I'll explain the project and then answer any questions. So presently, the Hill School has two turf fields up here on the section of the main campus known as the barfields. The proposed site is adjacent to the existing track, as well as the baseball field, and then there's an existing parking lot right here. The field right now is a practice facility, and they're looking to turn it into a turf field with bleachers, scoreboard, and lighting, um, for the football team. And that, that would relocate their games from down to Dell Field up to the field site itself here. So again, this is a blow-up of the existing conditions plan. Means we have the existing parking lot here, the practice fields are located here, and there's the existing pavilion. About seven years ago, two turf fields were put on the other side of the walkway, and those are located up here, and then the existing track and field is located on this side of the plan. So the primary purpose of the field is for the football team. However, it will be striped for several other athletics, such as the cross and soccer, for their use as well. So you have the full high school-sized football field. Uh, there will be bleachers installed along the one sideline with a press box, um, to observe the game. No changes to the existing pavilion and concession stand. That will remain, and these improvements will just connect to that through walkways. The field will also be connected to the, uh, existing parking lot by connecting it to the asphalt path that loops up here from the main path that cuts through. Stormwater for the project will be, uh, managed by a proposed MRC basin. The MRC stands for Managed Release, Release Concept, and that, uh, is an alternate BNP that was approved by the P A D E P several years ago for sites that don't have adequate infiltration rates. Um, being the Hill School and the local geology, uh, rock is anywhere from two to five feet deep, um, and soils have a high clay content and have the red tone associated with them. So infiltration testing was performed out on site. Uh, there was not an adequate infiltration rate for, to meet that standard, um, in the ordinance, so we are proposing the D E P-approved MRC basin. The site does disturb approximately, I'll go over to the next plan, but less than four acres of total disturbance. Um, so it is required to go to the Conservation District in receipt of an N P D S permit. It is actively under review. It's gone through and completed the administrative review, and is now under technical review with the Conservation District. This is the Eversion Sediment Control Plan that's under review. As in, the improvements are limited to the immediate area of the field as much as possible. There will be relocation of the, some of the track and field equipment out of here so that it's not being thrown onto the new turf field. Otherwise, the majority of the site will drain, um, up to the, towards the existing fields, uh, while rock construction entrance, compost filter sock, and inlet protection to capture it. Uh, the other thing to note with the existing basin is that the discharge will be connected into an existing, um, sewer system that's up here from the fields, um, that were previously installed several years ago. So there'll be no direct discharge overland or to existing streams. Uh, we are, um, designing two B and L barrel ordinance requirements in regard to stormwater, so we're doing the reductions. Um, we're compensating for the volume through the use of the MRC in order to mitigate any downstream effects from the proposed improvements. The field itself is being modeled as an impervious surface, and as such, um, there is a stone bed beneath it that can store rainwater, but it's only for storage. The actual treatment will occur in the MRC basin. So the intent is here, the majority of the stormwater comes through the field. There's underdrains beneath it. They, uh, capture the stormwater and convey it to either end of the basin, and then from there, it's detained and managed in accordance with the state's regulations, and then discharged through an outlet structure to the distant system. We are rece- we are within receipt of three comment letters. One from the Barrow Engineer Cedarville regarding the land development, one from H R G for the utilities, and one from the County Ca- uh, Planning Commission. All letters are welcome by. Um, there was a waiver letter provided as well. There is twenty-two waivers requested from the Sato, um, but that is on par with the past projects, given the zoning district it falls in and the campus nature of the site. Again, all, all comments are welcome by. The intent is to work with the engineer and staff to satisfy those comments. We don't see any hurdles on those.
Good.
And I'll stop there and see if there's any questions, and then talk about the one comment that came out of Planning Commission.
What do you say about games? Is it gonna be games here? Actually, games here, or is it practice?
No, this, this will be the football, I don't wanna call it a stadium, but this will be where all the football games are held and the bleachers for spectators. A, um, a press box for coaches for observation or videoing of the games.
There's games there.
Correct. Yes.
And not be playing games at that, that field down there?
Off a beach? No, no. All games will be relocated up to this field.
Park?
Yes.
I'm the councilman of that ward. And I, I know in the past, there's been a lot of issues with parking spreading out to the, to the, to the east office. Are you, you don't want to re-lead that?
To date, there are no, on this plan, there are no proposed parking improvements. The existing, uh, parking lot is intended to be used, um, and then as well as any other campus parking facilities on site. Just such the parking lot done by the Dell.
I'm talking right now, there's going to be parking again.
I do know, I do know the Barrow has reached out to the...
It's always been a problem, that's a problem.
Oh, understood.
They continue to be a problem.
And I do know the Barrow has reached out to the school, um, because it has been coming up more and more lately, and they are in conversations about ways to remediate it.
Yeah, yeah, they have to, you have to figure something out. And you said that it's a management system, get back to previous, um, people here. Is there a certain amount of time that that water is maintained within your system for the leases?
The system has to drain, though quicker than twenty-four hours, but no longer than, uh, seventy-two hours. So between one and three days.
So maximum time it can hold is three days, you think?
Correct. That is the accepted guidelines as the average duration between storms. So the intent is to have that drained within three days, so when the next storm is theoretically to come, it can receive that storm and manage it.
Normally, if that wasn't there, then it'll, it'll all drain to, you know, the, you know, the ground. But now you're capturing all of that.
Correct.
Now you're capturing all of that, and you're ma- and you're maintaining it, and you're isolating, and holding it for three days.
Correct.
Now, if there's a storm event, longer than three days, well, really saturated. How's that, how's that coming in?
There is an outlet structure with it, so if the water rises up, or there's existing water remaining into it, it will rise up, go into the outlet structure, and drain through the existing pipe network system.
And the pipes, they're going to handle more than three days then?
Yes. The pipes are designed to convey the twenty-five-year storm. In the event the storm is higher, um, or there's an, an emergency situation from a stormwater standpoint, there is an emergency spillway where it would rise up and it would spill out here. And then again, through overland relief, it would either find its way into the existing inlets or ultimately continue downstream.
And are your two, three years, well, again, are you getting anti-airfall of that?
Yeah. Yes, yep, and we're, we're, we heard our letter now, and to this point, our comments are welcome by.
That, that's the main concern I'm, I'm concerned about. Mainly the parking is going to spill out. Because now there's games there now. You know, now there's games up there. You know, I, I, I don't know the capacity of that parking lot. Do you know the capacity of that?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
You know, that could be a problem. If games now up there, that could be a problem in the neighborhood. You know, that has to be looked at somehow. I don't know. Okay, that, that was my main concern I'm gonna put.
Okay.
Mainly parking in the neighborhood, because I get a lot of calls on that. Every time there's an event going up there, I get a lot of calls, you know. I travel up there, and I can see all the cars down the street, walking, walking up to the event, you know. Yeah, that's, that's something I want to put out there.
No, I know, and that's, it's, um, it has been brought up, and there has been, I've been a part of some recent email exchanges where that conversation is happening, on, on ways to mitigate that. Any other questions? Then, from the Planning Commission, as in, we received a conditional approval to advance to tonight and, uh, to Monday night's meeting. However, and all waivers were approved, with the exception of one in regard to open space trees. And that comes out of section five oh four. And that section indicates, in areas of any developed lot where there are no buildings, one shade tree shall be provided for every eight thousand square feet of total lot area. This shall be addition, this shall be in addition to trees required for frontage and parking lots. The waiver for street, uh, for, uh, open space trees was made, because you can see, it's an athletic field, and the intent is to keep the perimeter open. You know, if balls go beyond the limits or out of bounds, players run beyond, and there's track and field vents that occur over, the field vents from tracks occur over here. Other than that, the improvements, like I said, to limit the disturbance to the site are tucked in as tightly as possible to just what needs to be disturbed to put these improvements in. Um, there are some planer beds and some landscaping proposed, um, alongside the bleachers and alongside the MRC basin. The MRC basin itself will not have any trees in it. At the bottom of the MRC basin is a stone layer that holds the water as part of the management. So, you know, we do meadow grasses in it, but we don't plant trees, because ultimately their root system will go down, damage that bottom layer that, uh, provides the volume and storage to meet the basin requirements. So that was, that was the intent of the waiver. Um, for the calculation, we're quite, um, for five trees. Um, I know there was some conversations about twenty-two required trees. However, that calculation was taken off of, um, the overall limit of disturbance, which was almost four acres. However, uh, the Barrow previously granted the waiver, um, for this requirement when we came in for the emissions parking lot, based on the, um, proposed, just the proposed area that could support those trees. So that takes out, you know, the basin, the bleachers, the pavement, and the majority of the disturbance is the field itself. So that's what we got from the twenty-two down to the five to make that correction. Um, so the, the school is willing, you know, to either plant the five, you know, nearby or where it makes sense within these, uh, improvements on campus, or provide the fee in lieu of a five hundred dollars per tree. So that was the one item that the Planning Commission, um, kinda, you know, didn't give us an answer on, and, you know, we asked to come tonight to discuss it with council.
I think there will be a further discussion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Keller, I think we want to do a request for a proposal for a fixed base operator. Garrett, explain.
Yeah, just, um, since it's been some time since we've issued an R F P for these services, um, and also in an effort to make sure that we're getting the best services possible with taxpayer resources, uh, we'd like to seek council's approval and permission to issue a request for a proposal for a fixed base operator at Pottstown Municipal Airport.
Any questions? Okay, we'll list that for Monday. Fifteen is the application of Montgomery County Recovery Pandemic Recovery Funds for two hundred fifty thousand dollars for Riverfront Park Pedestrian Bridge and Embankment Restoration.
Yes, these next two items, they're, they're both, um, grant applications to the pandemic, pandemic recovery fund by the county. There's no match required on, on either of these. So, um, the first one, if you recall, for the Riverfront Park, council had authorized submission of a two hundred thousand dollar Montgomery County twenty forty grant, which is separate from the recovery fund and the recovery office, uh, last month. And this, this grant would be a companion funding, um, to that first grant, and would cover the entirety of the, of the project cost.
And sixteen for the eight hundred, or the eight million?
Yeah, so we're also asking the recovery office for eight million dollars, um, to, uh, repair and maintain the existing stormwater arch system that we have, uh, in the town. Stormwater and, and stormwater infrastructure is an eligible expense through this program. And, um, based on last year's updated report, uh, of stormwater arches in the borough, it will take between, uh, seven and eight million over the next several years to repair all deficiencies. So this am, application is, while ambitious, it attempts to retain the full funding through one source. Um, and we're asking council to approve a resolution on this that will be ready for Monday night.
Fine. We'll list that for Monday. Seventeen, the Schuylkill River Greenways, uh, the twenty twenty-two paddling film festival.
Yep, I don't really have any more on, on that one. I think it's something that they had, had done before. This main request is for a beer garden as, in conjunction with that festival.
There is no question. We'll list that for Monday. Eighteen is light up High Street.
Yeah, so as Peggy mentioned, this is, this is a grassroots project funded by the private, private business community administered by PAID. We're looking at installing string lights in the downtown over portions of the sidewalk and over portions of the Penn St- the North Penn Street Alley, at least is the initial project. Um, as Peggy mentioned, PAID will be responsible to work with the borough to ensure proper location and heights and address any future, um, issues with the business owners. Business owners are responsible for electric, and we're seeking council's approval for indemnification in a form that's acceptable to the borough, and also for the placements of the lights within the boroughs right away on High Street and Penn Street Alley.
Good. We'll list that for approval. Uh, nineteen is the Hill School commencement. They wanna close Beet Street.
Yep. May twenty-eighth, uh, for their commencement. Yep.
Okay, that's for Monday. Twenty is the Pottstown Rumble. They want a beer garden as well.
Yep. June, uh, twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth.
Very good.
Excited to have them back.
We'll list that one. Twenty-one is the Go-Fort Festival. Another beer garden.
Yes, and I understand that, um, they will be making a request for the parade as well, but that'll, that'll probably come, um, next month.
Okay. List that one. Twenty-one is the Go-Fort Festival. Another beer garden.
Yeah, um, Smith Plaza, there's one, one there. Um, and then they're asking for the street, the, uh, yeah, the Street Fest as well on the, on the fourth. That's High Street, York to Charlotte Street. So it, it's, from what I understand, it's going to take similar form that it did last year.
Very good. That's those two. Twenty-three is Patriotic Five K. They wanna close Beach.
Yes, yeah, this is the Parks and Rec run that they sponsor every year.
Okay. Twenty-four, Play Streets, the Community Outreach Program.
This is a new program, and in, in essence, this program is intended to create the feeling of a family-friendly tailgating party essentially on various borough streets. So there'll be games such as, uh, Cornhole, Jenga, chalk games, various ball games, um, will be set up in the street adjacent to borough parks. So similar to Water Wednesdays, the program will feature... So similar to Water Wednesdays, the program will feature seven nights that rotate to different neighborhoods throughout the borough. It is hoped that these events will encourage residents to come out for a relaxed night of community engagement with opportunities to feature various local organizations. The idea is to expand this program in the future with more help from outside local organizations.
So we'll need to close streets.
Yes, yes, yep. And the list of streets are attached in, in the, in the program. And just want to say big thanks to Annie Graham and Parks and Rec, also the, for organizing this, this program, as well as the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation and Genesis Housing for providing the funding for the games.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Well, then you can approve it Monday night.
Bring the village together.
There you go.
Good.
Will this be typically happening like Friday and Saturday nights?
What, what are, what, are they weeknights, Andy?
Thursdays.
Thursday nights, okay.
Yep.
Their dates are in your package.
Very good. Twenty-five, Reading Gravity Race, and they're back again.
Yep, this was just rescheduled from March 13th where they didn't have great weather.
Okay. Twenty-six, police vehicles and equipment. Have the bids been opened?
Yes, they have, and we're recommending the municipal award of various police department vehicles and equipment totaling $13,421.
Okay. List that. Twenty-seven is a bid award for exterior repairs at 707 Hamilton.
We did not receive any bids. This is the second unsuccessful bid for this project. I think, given the nature of, of it being a residential project, being a smaller project, we can't find contractors that are interested in it. So we are going to be going back. This is a grant-funded project, so we're going to be going back to the grant agency to see if there's, there's anything else that they can do to help us spend this money.
We have the money.
That's really all we're trying to do, is spend the money to improve the property. So we're going to talk about what our options are with them.
Okay. That won't work. How about the steel overlay, or street overlay paving?
That'll open on the 11th.
On the 11th. And as for board vacancies for Harb, I guess we have one vacancy, and that would be Richard Bauer.
Yep, and Mr. Franz would like to be reappointed.
Oh, and Dick Franz.
Yes, and Dick.
Okay, so those two for Monday. It is that time to have comments from any of the citizens present. Any online?
No. All right, Tom Nyros, please.
I think that was the only one. Good evening. Tom Nyros, East High Street, Pottstown. Just coming tonight to say the last time we were here, didn't go as smoothly as a lot of us had hoped. Since then, there's been some, a lot of internal restructuring, as well as external with the organization, and really just want to express upon, upon you guys how important it is that we work together, how much we want to work together, and how we have six months to have a solution before November, before freezing temperatures again. And, you know, we're willing to go wherever we can go, but it's going to cost a lot of money, so just really want to try to have a meeting, an open dialogue, and try to understand what's mutually beneficial and ultimately beneficial for the community. Thank you.
Good.
There's no further assistant comments.
Okay, so how about from the councilors? Councilor Banny, you're with us?
I am. I will save it for Monday.
Oh, all right. Councilor Kirkland, anything?
Just a question in general. You said that the, the paving for, the major pavings are delayed till next year or something like that, to 2023 or something?
Well, that's just the Penn dot paving on High Street between Kime and the Borough Line. Everything else is still moving.
Yeah, and so how about the local stuff, like the local streets and all that is scheduled pretty much, or?
Uh, that bid award's going to be opened on the 11th, and then you'll have the opportunity to award the borough paving on Monday night.
Okay. I thought there was some stuff like from last year holdover that's still coming, you know, just, you know, paving locals, local, like-
Yes.
The rest of the streets.
The Pico paving was a holdover. They were supposed to get that in, and that's on High Street again between Charlotte and Kime, and they're supposed to get that in by the end of the month.
Okay. I'm talking about more local streets, like, 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 like in neighborhoods, like, where-
That's the borough paving.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're going to open those bids on the 11th?
Okay, okay. But I, I still thought that there was some stuff that was later from last year that didn't happen. That's, that's going to be-
High Street?
Just, just all over.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, that's generally correct. We're going to have a bigger paving budget this year because-
It all has to be rebudgeted again? It all has to be rebid, rebid from last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they're not going to hold their price for a year, no.
Okay.
All right. Councilor Lindsay.
Because there's, I'm sorry, because there's a lot of people who, who expected paving last summer-
Understood.
On their streets.
Understood.
It was scheduled for last summer.
Yeah, understood.
But it didn't happen. You know, some getting calls and say, well, you know, this is supposed to happen last summer.
Right, and one of them is Jackson Street.
Then, you know, yeah.
Right, I mean, that's, that one's on our radar, so, yeah.
Where is it at? Is it about, um, Brookside and Hill? Oh, and there's another one over there by-
So you're saying those streets have to be rebid again to, to do it next year or whatever?
Yeah, to do it this year, yeah.
All right.
Well, I was going to ask about the, about the roads because it got bumpy, and especially on High Street, because I drove, I drove the bus on there. I'm like, for this thing, it's really bumpy when you drive a bus over there. But, um, yeah, I was going to ask the same questions. But I don't really have anything. I know y'all shocked again, but, um, I'm going to do like Lisa, and I'm going to save it. I'm going to follow her lead, and so I'm going to save it.
You save it. Vice President.
Nothing.
Nothing? Councilor Prostle.
Congratulations, Matt. You're lucky you have a girl.
Why would you say that?
Try, try again. Try, try.
Mayor Henry, your comments.
I just want to say thank you for trying to fix the potholes in the borough. I highly recommend if you are getting tires to pay a little extra for the warranty. I've gotten two flat tires just driving down Wilson Street the past week, and it really helps when you don't have to pay for getting those patched. So it is something I would recommend, and it's not just from the borough. There are potholes everywhere. Concha Hockin has been terrible. I don't know, Trina, you've been driving a bus down Concha Hockin, but-
Yeah, the Concha Hockin.
-high street and old city, so.
Yes, yes.
Recommend that. And there is a lot of events going on in April and May, and of course, our summer events, so I will be putting those out. We can attach those to the packet.
Very good.
Wait a minute. College is having something Saturday. It's, yeah, it's Saturday, is in my calendar. Is it their anniversary or?
Okay.
Oh, I lied. April 21st, okay.
That's when they're having the fireworks, okay.
Okay, I just wanted-
I'll put that all down.
Okay.
Well, I got that.
Good. I will close with, once again congratulating our solicitor and his wife on the birth of their daughter. Enjoy. Meeting adjourned.